आपका फ़र्स्ट पार्ट ब्लॉक हो गया।
I lost probably seventy-five percent of my life savings, approximately three hundred thousand dollars.
मेरे साथ अचूक सैलाब बीस हजार रुपए मुझसे जोड़ ठग लिए रहे। जॉब के नाम पे। Lady की कॉल आती है वाहिन उर कॉर्प। और वो जो है मुझसे कहती है आपको यार लुकिंग फॉर ए जॉब। मैंने कहा जैसा हम लुकिंग फॉर ए जॉब। तो ये आदमी फॉर सिक्स थाउन टू अंडर नाइन नून रुपीस, ऐसे फीस चार्जेस वंस एंड फॉर ऑल। I paid them। और वो मेरा इंटरव्यू कंट्रोल करता है सऊदी वरांको में। एक मिस्टर जुमा है उनके नाम, उनके नाम से।
तो ये एक फर्जी इंटरव्यू?
फर्जी इंटरव्यू होता है स्काईप पे। फिर अगले दिन फूसी कॉल आती है कि साहब वो आपको जॉब का फाइनल हो गया। और साल की अभी सैलरी है, सिक्सटीफोर्न लेक्स। लेकिन उसका तीन परसेंट आपको अभी योर इंश्योरेंस बनी देनी पड़ेगी। As an idiot, I paid that lap, that amount also, एक लाख उन्नीस हजार सात सौ उन्नीस। वो मामला मुझे याद है। फिर उसी राज जिस राज मैं क्लियर करके आया हूं कस्ट फ्राइडे, मुझे याद है। मैं उसा डे आउट करा, तो आई फाइंड आउट ऑल डी डिटेल्स डेट दे आर फ्रॉड। इसके मैं।
ये आंकड़ा, यदि आप स्केल करें इसको, तो लाख करोड़ तक भी हो सके। कोई भी, कहीं का भी डिफेंस वाले हो, विरोकरेट्स हो, पॉलिटिशियन्स हो, बॉन्नीवुड से लोग हैं, हर व्यक्ति इनका विक्टिम हो चुका।
There were many, many fraudulent prescriptions for narcotics written in my name.
और एक दिन इंटरव्यू डिसेंट डालने के बाद, पांच उन दुआ बिल्ला, दी से अब गया।
ये सरकार के रिपोर्ट हैं?
तू, तू, जब पढ़े लिए तो रहता है नहीं, वो इसमें हो जाता है।
So, I just wanna invite the moderator and the speakers. So, the moderator for the evening is Mr. Pawan Kushwaha, founder and CEO at ThreatCop. We have Mr. Abhishek Bansal. He's the Head of Non-Financial Risk and Chief Information Security Officer at Max Life Insurance. We have Mr. Badhanath Kumar. He's the Chief Information Security Officer and Data Protection Officer at J.K. Lakshmi Cement.
Hi everyone. Thank you so much for joining this panel discussion on people's security. Today, we're gonna talk about a very, very important aspects, especially when it comes to the organizations. But before I emphasize on this, I just wanted to understand, how many of you feel that the employees are one of the critical component in your entire cyber security, kind of lifecycle management or chain management kind of stuff? Okay, anyone has a data on whatever the attacks that are happening, how much is being contributed because of, because of the human element? Anyone, any percentage? Yes, sir? Awesome. Anyone? Anyone? So I'll just put out a fact, ninety-five percent of the attacks that are happening is, is involves human, directly or indirectly. The two, both answers are correct. Out of which seventy-five percent is majorly email-based attack, which is phishing. Sometimes the email is being delivered using ransomware and all those stuff. Our, our topic of discussion is today is gonna roam around entirely on a, on a people's security and how we can enhance that. So we're probably gonna discuss about the problems and challenges the enterprises faces for today from people aspect and what exactly are CISOs and their security community is doing to secure that. So this is majorly the point of discussion for today. So, so to start with, I'll just start with Abhishek sir. When we talk about people, as in, as in from a security standpoint, what comes to your mind? What, what exactly you think of? And I wanted to discuss, like you are open to think, to talk about anything, be it be on problem or solution side. So what is people in your sense in security? Awesome. It's not working, sir. Can you just check it?
Okay. So I'll say people is the most, most useful resource for any organization. However, I also see people factor as also the weakest link in any organization. I'll not call people as problem. But I think the way one should understand human resources or people, how they are different from machine is practically the feelings and the emotions which are tagged to them. Right? And this is what provides the strength, sometimes in certain situations to, you know, act. And at the same time, I also see this as the weakest link because typically, you know, especially in financial markets, we say it's greed and the fear. These are the two big emotions which drive any action. And typically, if something is lucrative enough, no people are gullible to it. So hence, the weakest link too.
Interesting fact. Apart from this, I just wanted to highlight that, what he exactly mentioned, I just want to emphasize more on that line that eighty-five, according to a report, eighty-five percent of the attack that is being targeted using people involves finances. So it's majorly happening, the primary motive of the people is finance or they wanted to get something out of it. This is what exactly is happening. Not only this, but if you look at, there are other motives. This could be defaming someone, there could be blackmailing, there's a lot of things that goes around. But this is the majority of the data. Coming back to this, so the next thing, to our next panelist, what do you feel like, like even, what kind of challenges that you feel, feel? And what kind of scenarios that you've occurred so far? When the attacks are happening or I think you come from a very long background, government and then non-government and you manage, I think, more than seven or eight entities so far, as in group CISO. What's your, what's your thought process and how do you define your strategies around the people's security or probably of your employee's security?
So, very pertinent question in context of manufacturing sector. If you see, when we talk about the IT-driven systems, people are actually aware in terms of understanding their cyber security requirements in terms of obligations, like what is expected from them in terms of frontline defense. But in manufacturing sector, if you see, the biggest challenge is the way people understands the cyber security. And especially the people who are working in operational technologies. That is the biggest threat. Because they understand security from a different lens, altogether from a different lens. Because we have gathered a lot of data and analytics to understand their cyber security posture. And even the basic awareness to tackle even the normal phishing emails. Normal means whether it is just even URL-based phishing attacks also. There is some sort of different, different approaches. And most of the people are getting compromised also. So the same way, at the same time, the way Abhishek pointed out, the people is something which is the frontline defense and important for your ecosystem. At the same time, they are the problem in terms of vulnerabilities. Because social engineering tactics, if you see, that is completely evolved. The way spear phishing messages are and campaigns are getting done, even your out-of-messengers, out-of-office messages are getting properly read by the outside attackers to understand your ecosystem, to whom you are reporting and all those things. So those things are very contextual. We have seen targeted attacks in our ecosystem where business email compromises are happening, right? And even, even impersonating the, your top executives or whole-time directors. And even the people are now aware to understand them. So these all things come with the approach where you have to take people as the frontline defense. And you have to create a culture where they are equally empowered to understand their cyber security obligations. Not being a pillant reader, but just as a frontline defense to contribute to the success.
Awesome. I think you touched upon one very important topic. When this come to specific attacks to specific executives as well as you talked about on, on spear phishing attacks. There is a incident recently happened in Pune. I just wanted to share that yesterday. There is a, so I think all people are probably from a security background and do this and know the technicality. But this MITM happen, correct? When there is a network pipe, you can just stop in between, modify the data and do the, kind of deliver the end results by modifying the request and do lot of stuff. The same thing has happened with email as well. So what, what really this attacker does is, they are, they are monitoring everything for an individual user and as well as for the organization. So what they did is, this, this Pune waste firm were manufacturing something and they were trying to get something from, from Europe. So they sent something, some email to the Europe farm and I'm not sure which one got compromised, either the Pune waste farm or that, that one. As soon as they sent, okay, this is what I need as a requirement. There's a mail, this has been given, like sent from a hacker using the exact same email, replacing A with E on the domain name and sent to the Pune waste farm. And the Pune waste farms actually made the payment of twenty-two lakh rupees on that invoice. The similar thing happened with, with Google as well. So like, we, we know that these as, is as the maximum kind of protection and then the maximum kind of system to check those things. But there's a Taiwan-based company who did this fraud for years. This is like, this is on a next level. So I think these, these attacks like you mentioned as, are so much sophisticated and require a lot of stuff. And this, this is, this brings to my next question to Abhishek sir. What's your way to assess and understand the, the mindset of your employees? And, and look forward, like okay, this is, how can, and you are on a risk management side as well? But how do you understand that, okay, this is the kind of risk that, that we have? And what exactly you do with that data?
It's a difficult question in the sense that typically, you know, yeah, phishing is done as an exercise by everyone, right? I'll, I'll give you an example which happened, which I kind of had seen kind of as firsthand experience. It was, you know, in my earlier avatars where I was providing services to some of the clients. Apparently, this company is one of the biggest acoustic manufacturers. So whatever phone you use, whether that is a Samsung, Sony or Apple, so one out of three microphones and speakers are kind of created by this company. Now, the CEO of this company had a very peculiar habit. He never used to take his machine out of the company. Even while he's traveling, he only used to carry out an iPad. So occasionally, he can respond back to the emails which requires, you know, some urgent action to be taken. And his machine was compromised. So the entire IT team was kind of confused that, you know, what has happened? Because this person never takes his machine out. And so they were very unsure. But apparently, I'll cut the story short. When they were actually investigating, what they realized that, you know, he received an image of a Formula One car and apparently this person was, you know, holds a taste actually in, you know, Formula One cars. And this was steganograph. There was a code actually behind the image. And that's how, whilst he was not doing anything fishy, that's how this, you know, the machine got compromised. Now, since you asked me a loaded question that, you know, how do I get to know about all the employees put together? It's, it's difficult and tricky one. I can do, so what we do today is, we, we kind of try and see anything, you know, based on certain exercises. Like, you know, we do simulation exercise and we try and make these simulation exercises very close to, you know, what you see your, you know, day-to-day ecosystem. So just like you see your daily soaps, you know, they will have, you know, festival of Diwali when Diwali is around the corner. We also try and create phishing campaigns or no simulation campaigns, whether it is phishing, smishing or wishing, closer to what the event is happening around in the company or around in the ecosystem. So that, you know, you can actually make it more true to the self and, you know, you really see who is acting on them. However, despite multiple attempts, I would say, you know, this is always a cash twenty-two. Because somebody is lured by, you know, a gift coupon, somebody is lured by an income tax commissioner, it, it always happens. So said that, I think, aside these things, you know, assessment is typically more to do with more of a user entity behavior analytics. If we really see something fishy, we kind of keep a more watchful eye on them and their behavior. But said that, I think it is more protection rather than detection, if I may say. So the focus is more on how we can actually stop these things upfront in terms of, you know, no whitelisting, what needs to go in, in terms of, you know, if anything comes in, what's the speed of response on towards it? Do I really have, you know, Holy Grail for assessment? I think, I don't think so. Because different people have different tastes. It could be music, it could be, you know, the photograph. I gave you an example of, you know, CEO of a big, big company. Right? And they're still opening it up despite you kind of doing a lot of awareness that please don't open or use your official communication for personal things. Still people end up using so. So it's always a, you know, cat and a mouse game.
Follow-up question on that. Which country you feel is the, the one who is actually attacking the Indian infrastructure or the infrastructure of, especially when it comes to financial segment? It's out of the blue, but I'm just...
I, I don't really have an answer, you know, which country kind of shares in the maximum phishing emails. But I don't know, I mean, maybe a wild guess, it could be like the eastern geographies of the world who are more interested in taking IPs from, whilst we are not really an IP capital of the world, but still, whatever we do best.
Awesome. Talking about the phishing attacks that have been happening, not only the phishing attacks, but let's include wishing, this is the phone call attack that you just saw from an NTV documentary. I wanted to ask audience, what are this? Let's, let's go to a state or a city in India. And I think everyone has seen Jamantara and, and all those things. Which city is actually spamming or hacking the people? Or which state that you feel is the, or the, the state which is actually doing this kind of stuff on a major line? Yes, sir? Oh, awesome, sir. That's, that's, that's literally true, a true answer. I think that the contribution is roughly around seventeen percent. The second city, any, any cases? The second is Matra. So it's, it's very interesting. Although then there's a followed by new and then, then the Jamantara come in. Jamantara is on nine point six percent. So I think, I think this is like propagated across the, the, the kind of India, which is like multiple cities, but there is, there's a lot of data. I have this like Bakaro, then Karma, then there's a, there's a lot of other cities which you have never heard about, contribute to a significant amount of phishing activities or wishing activities that has been happening. Apart from this, the, the interesting thing that, that has been happening is that it has become a business for them. So it's not only the phishing that they do, wishing that they do, they started WhatsApp, WhatsApp phishing, which I think you guys must have been experiencing. They have started doing this missed call thing. Then there is a, there's a video kind of stuff where the online video calls. So there's, there's a rampant kind of, kind of increase in cyber security incidents. In Delhi alone, the kind of incident that has increases two hundred percent. So the other part is, when it comes to wishing, India contribute to eighty-five percent kind of spam call and the call center which originate the kind of fraud call so far in across the world. So that's also a very, very kind of alarming thing. The government is obviously working a lot on, on that line. But I think we are becoming both on stopping as well as attacking on that line. Sir, what, what do you feel, this is the next question to you, sir. Phishing is obviously one of the critical factor which contribute seventy-five percent to the attacks. What are the other factors or the attack vectors that you see, which is actually impacting organizations? So, so you can talk about like multiple attack vectors? And so I'll follow the next question, but let's just go with that. What are the maximum attack vectors that you see?
That's, that's very important. But before that, what Abhishek mentioned in contextual example, right? For example, is steganograph attacks, right? So we have recently faced one scenario. I want to highlight that. Even the people's entry control as well as technological entry controls also. How it has to be there? Because at the, at the same end, you know, no matter how much cyber security awareness training or even drills you do, employees get victim. One or two percent of the employees can always be there because it is all human psychology, even mood swings and all those things. So one of your best employees can click on any phishing links and all those things. So what happened? A file came to our environment, HTML file. It was HTML file with malicious JavaScript code. And that was using some sort of EDR evasion technique. So what happened? Our few of the domains are already protected through advanced technology, what is called as deep CDR. CDR is nothing but contain disarm and reconstruction feature, which can even understand even unknown malware within, within image file or any sort of things. So that was protecting, you can say that seventy-five percent of the domains what we have, twenty-five percent of the domain was not getting covered. So now both of your controls are going to be tested. So what happened? That file, when came into our environment, the clean copy of the file got delivered where CDR was implemented. So even though employee clicked, the protection was there in terms of technological control. And about the twenty-five percent of the thing where it actually landed into the mailbox with the malicious content also. Employees clicked on that also. But if you see, just because of the human sentry controls where we have all those phishing drills and all those things on top of that awareness and all those things, it has protected in terms of human were aware or employees were aware to report that. So out of, let's suppose hundred employees were targeted, only one employee who had submitted that. And the submission was also getting tracked by one other technological control. So immediately, if he had, it was a JavaScript code with cross-site referencing of having a Microsoft pop-up. So employee thought that this is genuine PO copy and in hurry he entered the password. But see for how many? Out of hundred ninety-eight employees reported or two employees or one employee got victimized. So the crux is that both the controls needs to be there in the system. Now, the moment we are going to put the complete CDR package to all the domains and other controls also. It is just, it not one control, understanding other set of controls like password protected attachments. So most of the security solution, if you see, even the, we understand also, the moment it is encrypted, it is, it is not getting scanned. And it is all up to the employee understanding how to click and how to behave on those files. So these are very important thing. Now, coming to your question that, okay, phishing is one medium, email phishing. But the way it is evolving, the business is getting driven through other modes or like WhatsApp being one of the important things. So a lot of easy targets, we are seeing in our context through WhatsApp. So WhatsApp is also a very significant contributory factor in one of the attack vectors. The other things are always obviously call-based, then we talk about the SMS-based also. But if you see, there is a shift in SMS to human readability factor also. Most of the people are aware or, or available quickly on your WhatsApp, right? Even your top management also. If the top management just impersonating their public images and all those things. If attack is getting targeted to employees who are at the mid-level or, or junior set of things, that, okay, I am in some, some sort of meeting and I am asking you to do some stuff. So even employees are thinking that it is coming from, directly from top management, I should be quickly responding. So it is, it is always better to respond rather than react. But these, those things, how you will do? When we understand that these are the also, one of the prominent attack vectors these days. So yes, obviously, email phishing still at the top, but these are also significant contributions to the target. So if you are doing any phishing simulation based on email approach, that is not going to foolproof. So even if you have to approach via segmentation approach. Segmentation approach is understand all the departments, their ecosystem, their mode of operations also. For example, marketing in manufacturing, if you see, they are heavily dependent on WhatsApp. So targeting through email makes sense, but more sense to, to target them through WhatsApp, right? So that way, you have to keep on changing your approach in terms of targeting the different set of employees as per their job function and the customized templates of the, customized templates is something which is not new. Most of the organizations are already doing when they are adopting this. But are you understanding that every time you are changing it or consistently or in a mature manner? So those things are very important.
And also, sir, like you discuss about technological controls while this comes to, so, this is a follow-up question on that. Technical controls generally being put up on the environment of the enterprise or, or the company that, that, that is actually looking at. But what happened so far? When, there's a lot of things that comes when you, when we talk about WhatsApp, there's a privacy angle comes in, that the user do not want to share the data or, so you will, you, you are able to track the, the kind of stuff that has happened on the email. But what would be the strategy and just for the audience on, let's say, the, the things which are out of controls? Which is like, which, I cannot, obviously, I cannot ask my employee to get my, get a phone and then investigate or probably put something on the phone which reads the messages. What's your view on that, those lines like the, the, the attack vectors? So we have a one attack vector which is like SMSing, WhatsApp. Your ransomware is one of them again. You can contain the ransomware from multiple angles. So what, what do you see this and how you will, you will, you will be trying to control that? Is it like more on awareness or technological control or what's your view on that? Which is not kind of technically controllable system?
I think it should be balanced approach. So balanced approach is the key in terms of you need to understand that awareness is something which is very important. So that employee have capability or cognizance to understand what is these all attack vectors? Are they getting targeted? Or they are genuinely understanding that. And on top of that, but what if, if they are not able to identify the most sophisticated form of the attacks? Okay, in terms of social engineering? Because a lot of study patterns are there. If you need, if you understand that even there is a targeted study for organization, how they are dealing in their business, what sort of acquisitions they are trying to have? To, to have something. So those all things and then targeting the employees and all those things. So important is to have the balance between both the things. Even technological controls should never fail. That is, we, we focus always on protect, right? So protect is something where you can't deny. And if there is no protection, then obviously detection is going to be key. But how you are going to protect? You have to understand all sort of attack formats and even vectors. And then you have to have the technical controls in place and then doing some sort of testing to evaluate that, are they really effective? Those, these things are very important. So obviously, like the new attack vectors through keyword codes and all those things. So every time attack vector pattern is getting changed. So how, how you are even evolving in terms of awareness? So that the same sort of things are not getting repeated again and again. New set of things and all. And then the second part is important to have the right set of technical controls in place for preventive, detective as well as remediative, if something goes on.
So sir, to you, sir, Abhishek sir, we talked about the testing or, or kind of assessing the employees. You both, you both put up your points and how we can do it. What about, once the, the assessment is done? Sir, mentioned there are two kind of control. One is people control that you can put in, the other is technical control. In a people control, what do you sort of, how do you align your people controls? What it involves in a, in a people controls? And what's a strategy basically managing and putting up those people control? And what, what are the major factor that you put in?
Sure. But after I answer, you need to answer back, you know, which country? You didn't give that answer.
I'll do that.
So, one, I think, let me expand this. This is, phishing is not really a problem internally for, you know, employees, which organizations need to kind of deal with. Practically, I think everybody in this room is consumer of one of the financial services organization or one of the e-commerce sites and likewise, right? So we all are gullible. And I think from a financial services, I mean, I also kind of deal with that portion of, you know, complaints, obligations, come requests whereby, you know, people mention that, you know, they have received a call. And apparently, the caller knows little bit more about than you think they should know, right? So they do rekey these days, you know, whether it is about the phishing example which I gave earlier, where, you know, the CEO was hacked with an example of, you know, a Formula One car. Or whether it is about the information in terms of, you know, which bank you're holding your account with, which insurance policy you're taking or what's your typical consumer pattern? So some of these things are kind of rekeyed actually in the environment these days. So I think foremost, for me, the simple strategy is first of all, simplify the messages which you are passing on either to your employees or to your customers. Right? In terms of what is an ideal behavior and why this is an ideal behavior? So don't tell them that, you know, you need to keep in eight character passwords. This is now, you know, passe, right? Everybody knows that, you know, fine, I have to keep a long password because now you're asking me to. Tell them, tomorrow, even if I come for nine character password, what's the need behind? So I think what is something which has been, you know, more with the security professionals? If you can actually explain them in a very commonsensical way, that these days, your computer in a mobile phone is good enough for, you know, someone to kind of brute force and take your password, then, you know, next time, they will keep a strong password. You don't have to educate them again and again. Right? So simplify the message, but give them in a way so that, you know, it can be actually reinforced, right? So simplify the message and keep on reinforcing it again and again through different channels and medium. I think constant awareness is one of the key factors. You know, whether it is a very trivia phishing attack, siphoning of the information or it's a sophisticated ransomware attack. The professionals are not actually battling against technology. You are battling against an adversity who is also a human being. Because, and typically, you know, one can actually look into the different ransomware case studies which have happened or different advanced malware case studies. When a hacker gets to know, you know, that you are actually removing of the files, then they will try and do some other action. If, if they are really deep into it, because then they are also trying to see actually what action you are taking and they are reacting to it, right? Now possibly, one can argue that generative AI can do lot of stuff. But apparently, generative AI which is in the form today is still a weak AI algorithm or no weak form of AI. It's not reached actually an advanced set of, you know, AI, no gen AI, what we see. So still, there is a room, if I may say. So simplifying the message and reinforcing it, I think that brings in the home, that kind of culture which you want to instill. I mean, I am not underscoring the importance of tech controls. But besides tech controls, what an end-user can... what an end user can do? So, for example, when you are at your home, you are consuming a banking application, what you should do? You will not, I mean, fair enough, that is the job of a bank or an insurance company that, you know, they will deploy certain tech controls. But as an end user, if something, you know, somebody gives you a call and, you know, he is kind of luring you and you are passing on all the details, none of the technology controls can help you.
Okay. Yes, sir. There is one more thing, this is, this is what I just wanted to share, sir. Sir touched upon the ransomware attack and how the hackers navigate from one place to another place. There is a recent, and I think everyone knows that, that the hacker group, Russian, I think a Russian hacker group attacked in the US infrastructure, a company. The company does not disclose because there is a regulation to disclose the cyber attack, disclose to SEC and because they did not, and they also did not give a ransom. So, they made a complaint to SEC that they did not disclose a ransomware attack. Literally, this has happened. So, a hacker going and complaining to a place that this is an attack that has been happened, they does not disclose you, so that they can, they can be fine. That's the kind of means being utilized. There are some other tactics like, right now, the ransomware attacks are so much high that every six seconds there is a ransomware attack which is going on right now. Not only this, but the ransomware, the losses because of ransomware is roughly around two sixty-two, two eighty billion dollars. The total cybersecurity market spending is not that much. So, that's the kind of level that we are living in. Also, coming back to the question that you asked me, which country is targeting? Based on our experience, so as in ThreatCov, we focus on people's security management. Based on our experience, the kind of countries that we have seen so far on impersonating, sending these SMS, WhatsApp as well as email attacks, the number one is Nigeria. That's where this end thing comes in. So, whenever you go and reinvestigate, because there is a lot of people come to us, okay, this is what has been happened and when we go and investigate, the end server will remain in Nigeria. And there are a lot of times we also try to get in touch with those cloud providers, those people, but there is no response from that line. And also like, there is a lot of things which internally goes in Nigeria, so I think this is a separate discussion altogether, but I think that's where the people are coming on that line. I think we are studying on short on time, but I think we talked about technological control, we talked about the awareness of the people, we also talked about the assessment of the people, that how you can assess the knowledge set of the people. I also wanted to empower, how do we, there is a new term which is coined so far in the industry called co-pilot. So, how do we make sure that while they are interacting with the technology and those traits, how do we empower them? And that's where, like we as in ThreatCov work so far, so we have, we have something called AAP model that we follow, which is a part of people's security management, where the first thing that we talked about is assessment, the second is awareness, which is AAP, then the protect, the technological control that we talked about and then the empowerment. So, what do you see the sense of a product or technology which can help them make a decision right there and there, which is like kind of handholding them while they are looking into those kind of threats? So, both of you can share these, your inputs on that.
So, today I don't really have, if I may say, a solution which, which on the fly educates a customer, right? And no, or a user where they can take a concerted action. However, I am still, I am using a technology where they can take a swift action. So...
I think I should come for a demo.
So, practically, you know, we are not waiting for the weakest person to kind of click on the link, but we are relying on the smartest person to actually spot it first. And the moment they kind of spot it first, my entire organization actually, you know, is safeguarded that way. So, that's the, that's the focus, you know, we have been kind of adopting. I don't really have something, you know, which on the fly is tell you which email is phishy and which email is not, right? I think I don't have that tech yet.
But do you feel it will be able to help the users when it's being launched so far? That, okay, let's say the user have a email where they get something kind of button inside the outlook or something like that and they click on that and they get to know the, why this email could be a threat and what potentially it tend to say or the kind of attack that has happened so far in the informal case studies?
It depends actually, because given basically the regulatory landscape, especially with the new data protection bill, I am not sure whether, no, this will be too onerous where the solution is going to snoop into all the emails, but would happy to kind of see what is in store.
Awesome. Sure, sir. The same goes with you. And overall, you can talk about overall people's security management and what exactly can be done so far.
Most of the important points already covered. So, because obviously you also want not your weakest link to be exploited. You want your smartest people to report and that's the important thing when we talk about frontline defense. A culture should be created where employees are completely confident that they have to report the security incidents and something where they are not fearful that action can be taken against my team or something like that. Those all things are important, but at the same time, technological control, when we talk about empowering is something which has to be foolproof. It has not to be enter into so much of scanning and all those things that, so that it is directly entering into your headers and all those things. But apart from that also, but it is always good to have empowerment for employees to respond quickly because finally when I classify employees, it is always your good employees who are reporting, bad employees who are getting phished and there is a set of called dormant employees who are not taking any action. So, you are not sure about them also, what they will do in case of actual cybersecurity sort of breach or attempt to them, so through social engineering man. So, I used to focus to discuss with them all also, what action you have taken, what were the red flags you have identified and let's help to understand us also that what shift is required in terms of your understanding and all those things. But yes, empowering is very important, but with the right set of technological control.
Awesome. Thank you so much, sir, for your valuable insight. Let's open the floor for the questions. Can someone please pass the mic?
Yeah, so I have two set of questions. First question is that the employees of the organization, they are apprehensive in reporting the incidents because if there is any data breach or any incident targeting an organization, it ultimately boils down to the responsibility of the IT team and CISO. So, they think, not they think they consider it like we are going to report it, logs and other things will be asked from us and then maybe a pinpointing thing will be done there, where responsibility will be fixed upon them, that due to their error or misjudgment that incident happened. So, the liability part, that is their concern and their apprehension. So, how do you people as CISO assure them that, okay, if they are going to report it and even if there is a error on their part, omission or commission, they are not going to be penalized for that or like no liability or punitive action would be taken against them? How are you going to, how you assure them?
So, you need to actually flip the coin. Instead of actually they, you know, fearing you out, I think there is a merit in changing the culture of the organization by rewarding such people who are actually forthcoming and reporting such behavior or reporting such instances. Because it is, you know, whether it's a CISO or a set of security professionals within your organization, they are still handful, right? And there can be multiple such examples which can be useful to this, you know, CISO or the security team to actually, you know, put those relevant safeguards in the organization. So, one needs to work towards creating a positive environment. So, don't actually shoot the messenger, you know, if somebody is actually, you know, coming up with an example or, you know, what is happening. It could be anything. The mouse moving on its own, people finding sent items in their email boxes, you know, machines running too slow, you know, one way is you simply rebuke them and say that I don't know what you are doing on your machine. And second is, you are actually looking into not only this, because now you will have multiple people coming to you and reporting and you will get to know whether this is a standalone instance, what is something which is a concerted attack on your organization. So, my suggestion to you would be, you know, focus on building a culture in your organization.
Can I?
Sir, rightly said. So, it helps to understand the targeted and sophisticated attacks, sometime even the slowness issues, right? For example, any sort of DOS attempts and DDoS attempts are happening. So, employee need to be confident, right? They are not getting reprimanded by reporting something, right? So, that culture is something is very important. And the second important thing is, one important piece you need to understand that if employees are reporting it too early, reward and recognition, all those things and even by not taking any sort of action also which is not required so. But there are some sort of repeated offenders. They take some action, then they realize that something wrong has happened and then they are reporting. So, then in those cases, we have to take a sort of balanced approach to deal with those employees also, where manual coaching or training is required, that though you are reporting, that is correct, but then also why you are doing these things to check? Are you just doing out of curiosity or something else? So, those also need to be understood.
So, I'll share some of the things from based on data. So, as a ThreatCov, we are specialized in people's security management and we have roughly around twenty lakh users actively using our platform, which includes our in-house and SaaS-based models. What happened so far is, what, when you do, so when you follow the PSM, which is people's security management, it like, again, I will just wanted to rephrase it, AAP, which is assist, aware, empower, protect and empower. So, in assessment, when you send out the phishing emails and do those exercises, you give them a button. So, as soon as they click on that button, they know that they are reporting a phishing email and helping the company and then, and an organization. So, you have to build that culture, what rightly this speaker said. So, once you do more and more those kind of exercises, the people are promptly going to report them. And meanwhile, when the real attack happens, they actually go and tend to report it, to put up some light on from a static standpoint. What we have seen so far that the employee on an average report two emails per day in our cases, where we get to know. And these, we, like the CISO does not do, and I think you agree with my line, that the people and CISOs and the security team does not do these similar exercise on a daily basis. So, if two emails are getting reported on a daily basis, that means the culture is being built up on those organizations and they know exactly what kind of malicious email and everything. Not only this, but we also, when they report that button, we also give them their own profile kind of badge, how many email that they reported which is find out suspicious, how many was not found out suspicious. So, they get analytics of their own, so that they can understand that, okay, they are contributing to the company. So, they will not think twice before reporting that email. That's very critical and that's how the culture is being developed. That's coming from the experience that we have.
One more question I have. To Abhishek, I have one more question. So, I was going through the interviews of IRDA chairman, they are saying that they are promoting insurance for all by 2047 and lot many initiatives are there, Bima, Sugam and all those. So, what like as an insurer and insurance industry as a whole, what steps are they taking for cybersecurity? Because obviously when these platforms are coming, so there will definitely be chances where there will be lot of incidents when technology is coming in the insurance industry. So, what as a, like Max Life as an entity and insurance industry as a whole, what cybersecurity steps are you taking to protect, avoiding incidents?
So, one regulator by itself is also coming up with lot of prescriptive guidance around it. As early as April 2023, there is a prescriptive guidance of one hundred and seventy-five pages only talking about cybersecurity. So, you can go through it and it will give you reasonable assurance that, no, there are no more than enough controls which have been asked for. And as organization, we not only follow the compliance, you know, we try and see how the effectiveness of controls can be ensured. A very simple example is typically the regulatory compliance would say, you need to carry out a vulnerability assessment and a penetration testing before any code is promoted or for your infrastructure and applications put together, right? Now, do you really, do you really rely only on the VAPD done by, let's say, one set of individuals or do you do something more? Now, that more can be anything. You can, you kind of carry out, let's say, maybe a red team exercise occasionally, you can carry out, you know, above-bound exercise, you can actually really see that, you know, maybe you can carry out a breach attack simulation and really see whether, you know, your systems are defensible enough and those vulnerabilities are, you know, patched, so that, you know, they are not crystallized in anything. For example, you know, whether it's a denial of service attack or data breach and likewise.
Any question?
Yeah, my question is, I look at the security as always a cat and mouse game. However strong you build yourself, you will find the adversary coming up with more, you know, more, more technologically advanced way of challenging you. When it comes to people, it is how much you've been able to inculcate in their minds. It's game of wits. Security is all about a game of wits. Basically, aim should be primarily to battle inoculate or cybersecurity inoculate, that comes through tabletop exercise and all things of those kind. My question to both of panelists would be, how would you ensure that, you know, that security mindset is ingrained with their mind? What I mean to say is, they should always be, their response to security should be very natural. It can't be, you know, responsive kind of a, it can't be very, very, it has to be with offensive mindset. So, how do you give that offensive mindset to your employee and do you find some challenge in that?
So, pertinent question in modern context, but it is really tough to build an ecosystem where all even business-related employees are your complete tech savvy to understand the cybersecurity offensive mindset. But how it can be dealt, even this is important. So, if you see that just generic PPT and all those things, training, education and those things are not going to help. So, you need to create some sort of practical scenarios where, where attacks, some sort of attacks happen. So, what, what we used to do, even while visiting to the plants and all the manufacturing locations, so we tried to make them understand by simulating that thing, what happened actually in that, what was the mindset of the attacker? So, that attacker mindset needs to be understood and it is somehow getting tagged to the psychology of human also. That's why they are trying social engineering means, why they are not these days so much prominent to enter into your network security controls or application security controls. They understand, you all, all the organization is having some sort of mature cybersecurity practice in terms of technological controls. So, what is the weakest link to target the employees? So, those simulations or those even practical scenarios to demonstrate them or communicate them effectively. For example, we have launched the InfoSec Wisdom series, where we used to educate each and every employee, the actual target, attacks, targeted attacks and then how any organization, for example, if it is targeted to our organization or somewhere outside also, we used to show step by step the main fundamental principles, what was actually done and how you have to recognize and quick tips also in two liners or three liners, quick tips, so that they can understand the mindset. So, not only the tips to safeguard your password and all those things, but how it is actually happening through the sophisticated means and then finally ending up with the tips. But those pictorial demonstrations and all things are very important because if you see, even the email retention period for any employee, for how, how long emails they can read, it is just one or two minutes, not more than that. Nobody is going to read lengthy emails where you are going to make them understand through what are the steps involved, what are the solutions taken by that organization and blah-blah. Those things are not going to help. What is going to help that the complete demonstration through some sort of pictorial that this was the attempt, this was the actual attack vector targeted and what is the employee mindset by which it was compromised and finally quick tips. So, these all things are very important. When you start involving with them with simulating those steps, at least, at least for few of the prominent attacks, then it will be more effective to create some sort of always a offensive mindset in business people, so that they are looking into something not to react, actually to respond. That's, that's the answer.
Thank you, Vedra sir. Thank you, Abhishek sir. Thank you so much for your time and thank you lovely audience. We really enjoyed this session and hope you guys has great time. We all are available on obviously respective Twitter and LinkedIn handles. So, if you have more questions, feel free to ask and take it offline. Thank you so much for your time.